Good evening and welcome to this board meeting of the school board from Murfreesboro City Schools for September 23rd, 2025. I want to welcome everyone who's here with us tonight in the room and welcome all of you who are watching us from elsewhere. Before we get started, I do want to just address a little bit of something that's different tonight. You may notice that Mr. Campbell and I have swapped seats. This is after our last meeting where we elected our chair and vice chair of the school board. And I want to thank my fellow board members for entrusting me with this position as chair and ask everyone to give me a little grace and patience as we get through this transition.
Hey, hey, hey.
And I was going to thank Mr. Campbell for setting a great example, but I do want to thank Mr. Campbell. He has served as our chair for 11-plus years. And has done an incredible job. He led us through some really difficult times. This was the period we had COVID, we had the sudden loss of Dr. Gilbert. We had some really testing times for all of us and you led us through just wonderfully. He leaves some really big shoes to fill, but one thing you have done is really make this board collegial and cooperative by always stressing that our purpose here is for the kids of Murfreesboro and that's something that I hope to follow in your path and do.
I'm sure you will.
Well, thank you. All right, we can start our meeting officially now. We will have a pledge of allegiance tonight. It's going to be led by three of our students, Olivia Smith and Jackson Wright, who were students at Kason Lane Pre-K, and Isaac Lopez, Lopez, who is a third grade student at Hobgood. So I'd ask those three to come to the podium and I'll ask everyone else to stand for the pledge and for a moment of silence afterward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll have our moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. All right, board members, you have seen a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the agenda is approved. All right, communications, Ms. Lisa Trail.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair. Nice to see you sitting there. I do have a few communications for tonight. The 2025 State of the Schools will be Tuesday, September 30th, at Redstone Federal Credit Union. It will begin at 8:00 a.m. We promised to have you out of there by 9:05. That's up to Dr. Duke, but I think we will be out of there by 9:05. So we welcome you to come and any community member that would like to attend as well. We would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our partners, community members, parents. Just so many people came to our schools last week and did reading in the Schools Day and made it such a huge success. That is a partnership with Read to Succeed and we appreciate that strong partnership. The MCS Art Taking Flight Show will be held next month, actually at our next board meeting, at the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport in association with the STEAM Festival. It's actually kind of their step going towards a STEAM Festival. The art teachers and the students have been working on this unique tailwing project and can't wait to see the art. We get the art later on this week and I know it's going to be awesome. Mr. Shacklet, you've got a lot of art to judge, I understand. So we are looking forward to that and we want to invite people to come out to the airport and see that. Also, the City Schools Foundation will be hosting our Serve It Up Pickleball Tournament on October 23rd and 24th. We invite you to sponsor or to play. Either way, we're good with that. So we'll just come out and watch. It's going to be a really fun event. It will be held at Adams Tennis Complex. And then we also have several parent university programs scheduled for the fall, including a family field day at Barfield Park and a family event at MTSU. There's lots of other activities, both in person and on Zoom. That is all on our website under Community Outreach. And then finally, we want to invite our board to become a judge with our ESP program as we bring back the Junior Chef Academy. So we are so thrilled to have that back running this year. Those are my communications.
Thank you, Ms. Trail. Next on the agenda, the Best of MCS, Angela Wilson.
Good evening, Board. Tonight is my privilege to recognize our September Best of MCS honoree and to publicly thank this employee for the impact she has had on our schools and most importantly, our students. So I'm honored to introduce Ms. Angela Wilson to the board tonight. Ms. Wilson has been in education for 23 years and has spent the last six years serving at Hobgood Elementary. Prior to joining us in Murfreesboro City Schools, she's taught in several other places, including Inglewood Elementary in Nashville, Grassland and Curry Ingram in Brentwood, and Myers Elementary in Pennsylvania. Over her career, she's taught kindergarten, first, and second grades, but for the past several years, she's dedicated herself to serving as a resource teacher at Hobgood. When she asked why she loves her job, Angela shared this. She said, "I love teaching because it allows me to develop deep relationships with people. It's a gift to have a job that captures my heart and brings joy in knowing that every day I'm blessed to spend the day with people I love, my students, my team, and my school family. I love working alongside others who pour their hearts into their children every day. I find joy in working with an IEP team who celebrates the growth of students academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. I am so thankful that God has opened the door for me to serve at Hobgood. It's truly a gift to serve in a place I love with people that I love." Those words alone paint a powerful picture of who Angela is and the heart that she brings to her school every day. But I also want to share what a few others have said about her. Miranda Good, our Special Education District Coach, actually nominated Angela for this. And Miranda said, "Angie represents the best of MCS because of the joy she displays when working with children. Her love and compassion for her students radiate for all to see. She takes on challenges with a smile and eagerness to help students be successful. There is not a moment that goes by when students are not engaged in high-quality instruction in her room." Her principal, Ms. Bell, added, "To know Ms. Wilson is to love her. She has a unique ability to make both students and teachers feel valued. Ms. Wilson prioritizes the needs of her students in all her decisions, demonstrating her commitment to promoting their success. Her passion for learning and growth is inspiring. As a resource teacher, she effectively contributes to the growth of every child she teaches. Each one of her students knows that she believes in them wholeheartedly and there is no task, too big or small, that Ms. Wilson won't tackle. She possesses a strong work ethic, extensive knowledge, high expectations, and an extremely kind spirit. Simply being around Ms. Wilson makes you strive to be a better person," and I love this. "At Hobgood," Ms. Bell says, "we often say, 'I'm nice, but I'm not Ms. Wilson nice.'" Ms. Bell said, "We take pride in having her as part of the Rocket family." Board members, I think that quote says it all. Ms. Wilson is not only an outstanding educator, but also a shining example of what it means to serve with joy, passion, and excellence. She embodies the very spirit of Murfreesboro City Schools, ensuring that every child is known, safe, challenged, and empowered. Ms. Wilson, on behalf of Hobgood, the district, and our school board, it is my great honor to say thank you for being the best of MCS.
Thank you all very much. That was very kind. I really appreciate your words of encouragement and this honor. I absolutely love my job. I'm so thankful to serve at Hobgood. I'm really thankful. So, thank you.
Right, next on the agenda is our Spotlight on Education, the Tennessee All Core presentation by intervention specialist Felicia James.
Yes, tonight for our Spotlight on Education, I'm excited to welcome our intervention and acceleration specialist, Ms. James, who is now, I think, in month three, maybe, four?
I think seven, yes.
Two, I don't know. She's not, hasn't been here long. One of the areas we are focused on this year is ensuring in all of our schools that our tutoring program is supported to maximize those gains. And this has been a real focus for Ms. James since coming on board. So she's here just to tell us a little bit about what she and the team have done so far this year to make that a reality.
All right. Thank you so much for this opportunity to talk to you about Ten All Core. So just a little bit about Ten All Core. The "all" in Ten All Core stands for Accelerating Literacy and Learning, and I think that really does sum up our goal of what we see in tutoring. You have before you just a little bit about Ten All Core. A couple of things. Our model is a research-based model to impact tutoring. We look for that low ratio, that low ratio of student to teacher. We try to keep that at a four-to-one ratio. Our tutoring is sustained and intentional, meaning our students are receiving those services about three to five times a week and it goes for the entire school year. It's also based on high-quality instructional materials that directly align to what they're receiving in their Tier One instruction so that our goal is to really accelerate those students. And the other thing we're very proud of is that this tutoring occurs during the School Day for our students. If you will notice a picture of our Ten All Core tutors. I love a picture because I feel like that puts faces with who provides these services. So with these, with the permission of these individuals, I snapped a picture so you could see who was providing that service. And just a little about what supports our tutors receive. We do staff this with our educational assistants and they provide tutoring during the boost block time. Our educational assistants are familiar with the students as well as the content and then they are provided ongoing training and support throughout the school year. So thank you for the opportunity to spotlight Ten All Core.
We're happy to entertain any questions. I will say we have one of our Ten All Corps with us today, so thank you for being here today.
Excellent employee as well, but happy to answer any questions. Again, this program started really in response to preparing for the Third Good Retention Law as well when the tutoring came into effect. But we've seen a lot of great progress from it. Felicia has done a fantastic job leading the program this year and making sure, again, we're maximizing those gains. And so, again, happy to answer any questions, but definitely want you to know more.
Madam Chair, I don't have a question, but I do want to say I appreciate the picture because I love seeing all those faces and it's highly reflective of Murfreesboro City Schools. That's what I really like about it. Kids respond well when they can see themselves reflected in the people that are helping them and loving them and all that good stuff. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And when you meet with these individuals, it is evident their love for our students. So that's very encouraging. I just had the opportunity to meet with them Friday and do some training and their, their energy is contagious. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Right, board, next comes our consent agenda. You've seen the items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So move, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Long. I'm going to assume a second from Mr. Settles. Thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have approved the consent agenda. Action items, approval of the capital improvement plan.
Yes.
Dr. Duke.
Yes, ma'am. The capital improvement plan is presented to the board for the annual approval that we do each year. The plan has been updated to outline major projects and purchases that are projected over the next six years, and we will continue to update this every year based on changing needs. The board last approved a revision of the plan on September 24th of 2024. Major projects that are slated for this fiscal year include the replacement of the roof at both scales in Kason Lane. I do want to point out in the version presented to the board at the August workshop, this was actually spread out over two years with scales this year and Kason next year. But in our conversations and consultation with the city staff, we are going to combine that into one year. The price point will stay the same for this year, though. Additional FY26 projected projects include floor coverings at Hobgood and Mitchell-Nelson Elementary, ceiling renovations at Bradley Academy, five new buses to replace buses that are going out of service that have aged out, as well as a growth special education bus. We also have several new maintenance vehicles and the replacement of the HVAC with energy updates at Central Office. The staff in our office will use this board-approved plan as we work with the city of Murfreesboro to address needs. We're happy to answer any questions you may have and we are recommending approval as presented.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the capital improvement plan?
I make the motion to approve the capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the capital improvement plan, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And it is approved. Next is approval of a contract renewal, the Emergency Relocation Transportation Agreement with Rutherford Collegiate Prep.
This Emergency Relocation Transportation Agreement between MCS and Rutherford Collegiate Prep allows the district to provide buses and drivers in the event of an emergency at Rutherford Collegiate Prep that requires the relocation of their students and staff to a safe location. The contract is written for a one-year term, renewable annually up to four years. This item represents the second time this agreement has been presented to the board for approval. In the case that these services were needed, Rutherford Collegiate Prep would reimburse MCS for any overtime cost incurred. We are happy to answer any questions you may have and we're recommending approval as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this contract renewal?
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any comments or questions?
Question. Where are they located?
They are located within the city limits, right on the, actually the edge of the city limits, 840 and Veterans is probably the easiest intersection to locate them. But you can actually see their building from 840 coming down the road.
Manson.
Yes, ma'am, Manson.
Manson.
I think it's, I'm not sure if that's the exact street. Is that right? Yeah, Manson. Yeah, thank you.
I guess that brought up a question to me. So this is our agreement for, to do the thing. Is there a plan already in place or they have to work that? How does that work?
So it would really go through Murphlesboro Police Department, much like it would for us. The only thing we're agreeing to is because they don't have buses or the number they need, they would call us. We would then send the buses and our drivers to relocate those students. We would not be in control of the students. We would literally just be transporting them and their staff.
Gotcha.
Any other comments, questions? All right.
Do you know where they would be relocated to?
We do. We wouldn't disclose that, but we do know what that location is.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the contract renewal, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the contract is approved. Next on your agenda is approval of a memorandum of understanding occupancy and cost allocation at 910 Ridgely Road. Dr. Duke.
Yes, as the board is aware, we are officially in our building at 910. And this proposed MOU is with the city of Murfreesboro that outlines responsibilities related to occupancy and cost allocation for the property located at 910 Ridgely. In addition to the spaces that we use for the city schools for the educational administrative purposes, the city also occupies certain designated suites. Under the MOU, MCS will assume responsibility for 90% of the shared cost with the city covering 10%. Separate costs attributed solely to MCS or the city will remain the responsibility of each entity. The MOU also provides for project authorization, invoicing, and emergency repairs and the amendment process. We are happy to answer any questions you may have. This is not new. We started having these conversations when we first started the process of purchasing the building, the city knowing they wanted that space. And the 910 really represents the amount of actual space in the building. So that their suite is roughly, I think it's like 10.3%, but I told them we would, we would, you know, we'd just go with a, we'd round down to 10 because we're good like that, Mr. Shacklet. But they've been great partners in this and so this kind of just formalizes for both bodies what we had agreed to as part of the purchasing.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Next is approval of a contract with U.S. Educational Technology Purchasing Alliance for a membership and subscription agreement. Dr. Duke.
Thank you. MCS previously utilized a cooperative purchasing agreement that is no longer available for piggybacking for some of our technology services. To ensure that we have continued access to competitively bid contracts for our E-Rate eligible technology services, we're seeking approval to join the US ETPA, which is a North Carolina-based cooperative purchasing alliance. This organization files required forms annually on behalf of the members, satisfying all federal competitive bidding requirements, and allows the districts to avoid filing our own 470s for covered services. Membership will also provide us with access to E-Rate eligible technology contracts and a not-to-exceed pricing while ensuring compliance with federal, state, and local procurement rules. There is no cost to join. Future purchases made under these contracts will be eligible for E-Rate discounts and would fall within our budget, reducing technology expenditures. I will say this is really a preemptive agreement so that we have the option when the previous contract we were piggybacking off was no longer available, we wanted to get this in place as an option so we could look when those services were ready to purchase.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the contract with US ETPA?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any comments or questions? Mr. Settles?
I have a question. Does it differ very much from what we already had in place?
No, it doesn't. And again, we, there is another procurement consortium we can also purchase off of. So this just gives us multiple ways to do that so we can look for the best price. But E-Rate will really help guide, making sure we, what we purchase is in line with the E-Rate funding we would be reimbursed for.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of approving the contract with US ETPA, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion is approved. Next up, approval of a budget amendment for the Public School Security Grant.
We were awarded $183,622 as part of the Public School Security Grant allocated by the Tennessee General Assembly during their last session. This is new revenue that was not available to us when we did our budget back in April. And so we're asking the board to approve it now. It can only be used for allowable school safety purchases. And for our district, items we're looking at include increasing camera coverage for areas in our buildings and outside of our building, the purchase of new radios for communication. As the boards are aware, we had a pretty significant amount of money in our GP budget for radios. This would add to that. Speed bumps for some of our school parking lots, which is a safety requirement, and the construction of a new vestibule at the entrance of Mitchell-Nelson Elementary. This is one-time funding just for this fiscal year. Of course, the General Assembly in the past has done this on occasion, allocated school safety money, but right now this is not expected to be recurring funds. So obviously, we're looking to spend this down and make the best use of this money as always.
Madam Chair, I move for approval. I didn't want to wait.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any comments or questions?
I did have, I know I'm talking a lot tonight. I'm sorry. But.
That's new.
Butch warned me this might happen, by the way.
Can you run through those, are these definitely what they're going to be used for, the funds again?
So it's what we've put in our application for, which is additional cameras, really on the exterior of our buildings. We have really great camera covers across our district. This will add to it, really on the exterior parts of the building, to enhance that beyond what we already have. Speed bumps for some of our schools that don't have speed bumps in those parking lots, new radios, and then the construction of a new vestibule entrance.
That's the part I was.
The front of Mitchell-Nelson Elementary. Again, it's, it's, and it's absolutely working now. Anytime that we can harden the front of a building, we want to take that opportunity to do that.
I love that. Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Now, vestibule, you mean that's the entrance?
Yes, sir. The, we have at that building, of course, the double entrance doors.
And that to take care of the, after you get inside, the double door.
We'll do both of them. Yes, sir.
That'll be the Butch Campbell vestibule.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of approving the motion for this budget amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion is approved. Next is approval of another budget amendment, this one for the 21st Century Community Learning Grant.
As the board is aware, we get, we receive the 21st Learning Grant on a five-year cycle. We are currently in year four of that cycle, which is, which is $571,000. This grant is used to fund our after-school tutoring program through ESP at eight grant sites. So it includes the partial salaries and benefits of our ESP coordinator, the enrichment specialist, our data personnel that's required to track this grant, as well as for all the teachers who provide the tutoring to those students, as well as their tuition to ESP and transportation home from the tutoring program. The board approved the preliminary grant in April as part of our standard budgeting process. At that point, we had to approve it. We were still two months from the end of the budget year. And now that we saw the actual allocations for last year, we're just asking us to change some money around to what was closer, what we actually spent. The majority of the funds being moved are out of transportation. We have few of our students in that program that are requiring transportation this year and so we're moving some of that excess money out of that transportation line to put in other categories.
Got it. Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendment for the 21st Century Community Learning Grant?
So move, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any comments or questions?
Is this still over the umbrella of the Ten All Corp? Or is this a different, is this a different?
Great question. So it's separate. So we run them similarly, but it's actually a separate program. As Ms. James said, our Ten All Corp program is run during the School Day. The first priority with that is who has to have it for promotion in fourth grade or to move on to fifth grade as part of the law. But then we always try to expand that to other students as well. But that is happening during the day. This is a separate program run through ESP. Now, our teachers are doing it, but it's actually certified teachers, which during the day, it's actually our Ten All Corp trained EAs. And this happens through ESP. We have about 381 students who participate after school in this tutoring and about 45 teachers that provide those services.
And our teachers are supplemented for this?
Yes, and that's part of this grant pays those salaries for that. And that is in addition to their traditional pay.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question, just because transportation is part of this. And I got a question this week after the Professional Development Day on Friday in Northfield, I did a poverty simulation. And so I had some questions afterward about transportation and when we provide that connected with ESP. So I, I know you said there's some transportation dollars connected to this. Is that just for the students receiving the tutoring or is that part of ESP regularly?
So right now, and Mr. Bartsch, you may have to help me out. To my knowledge, and I'll follow, the only transportation we are doing for ESP is related to this tutoring program. And the grant pays for that. Am I correct, Mr. Bartsch?
He gave you a thumbs up. I think we're good. Okay, thank you for that. All right.
I will say the poverty simulation, if you've never experienced it, is a fantastic experience.
It was great feedback that people were saying, so. All right, let's vote on this. Do, all those in favor of approving the budget amendment for the 21st Century Community Learning Grant, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Next is approval of another budget amendment, Consolidated Funding Application. Dr. Duke.
Yes, I had mentioned this to the board a few meetings ago in regards to our federal consolidated funding application, again, which was preliminary, preliminarily approved back in May, April, May with our budget. Since that time, we know we. Since that time, we know we went through some steps with the federal money, but the federal money was released, and with that, our allocation for this year was actually more than we had anticipated. So what this budget amendment does is it recognizes those new funds that we received for our Title I, Title II, Title III special education programs. It budgets that money, as well as some carryover money from last year we didn't have. So we are recognizing it as new money tonight, and the total budget amendment recognizes about one point nine million in both a combination of carryover and new revenue. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the budget amendment for the Consolidated Funding Application?
So moved.
Ooh, stereo. Thank you, Mr. Settles. Mr. Campbell, I'm going to say that was a second. All right, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor of approving the budget amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion is approved. Next is approval of another budget amendment, this one for the General Purpose Interfund Transfer.
The next few unfortunately are not new money, just some changes we've had to make. But the first one that you've pointed to, the FY twenty-six GP Interfund, this amendment is to transfer already-approved funds within our special education budget category. The sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ten dollar transfer will be moved from contracts with private agencies to special education equipment for FY twenty-six to purchase a needed technology and equipment. I will say, although we are lowering our contract with private agencies by about sixty-three thousand in this budget, in the federal budget you just approved, because we were, had reallocated money, we actually increased that line item in the federal budget by about two hundred thousand. So we increased it in federal and reduced it in GP to pay for these technology items.
Got it. Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendment for this Interfund Transfer?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Next is another budget amendment, Central Cafeteria Interfund Transfer.
This amendment is to transfer already-approved funds within our nutrition budget. It's a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar transfer related to indirect costs that aligns with state guidance on reporting that we received, so this is just moving the money for our indirect into the correct items per state guidance.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this budget amendment?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, any comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Next budget amendment, General Purpose Fund Instructional Coaches.
This amendment is a transfer of previously-approved funds for our instructional coaches. It's a one point three million dollar transfer, and we're moving that from regular instruction to support regular instruction. It covers their salaries and benefits related to the position. This is aligning with state guidance that asked us to recognize our instructional coaches not within the general teaching line item of the budget, but to pull them out into their own separate recognized line item. Coaches are, the state guidance on instructional coaches being a support function for the funding application, so there's no programmatic changes, no changes to fund balance, no additional coaches, just moving them from the teaching line item to the, a separate line item to recognize that.
All right, do I have a motion to approve this budget amendment?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Not a budget amendment. Next is approval of the fiscal year twenty-five unaudited revenue and expenditure report. Mr. Owens.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Keep it very simple, I only have two reports to report tonight. The first one is the FY twenty-five fiscal year end. It is unaudited, I do like to point that out. Obviously, we are going through our audit right now, so we are waiting for their final numbers, but these are based off our current projections. So as you see on our first page, you know, I've added this chart over the past few months, I want to sort of give you a rundown on that. So as you see, our final income projection came in at one hundred and twelve million, and our expenses were one hundred and thirteen. So ultimately, we were going into fund balance by eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. But most of that, if you'll turn to the next page, is summarized down at the bottom. That includes the three point one million that we transferred out of fund balance to cover Ridgely Road. If it wasn't for that, we would have added to fund balance roughly two point three million last year. So that was a good surprise, and it's nice to sort of see how that follows along. On the chart that I provide, I sort of, like I say, is a roadmap, I put a projection at the end, that's where we budgeted. So last year, when we started the year, we originally budgeted one hundred and seven million in income, and one hundred and eleven million in expenditures. But as we adjusted throughout the year, it fluctuated to one hundred and twelve million in revenue, and all the way up to one hundred and nineteen million is what we roughly projected we would need in expenditures and revenue. But ultimately, we came in under our revenue and expenditure projections, therefore creating that small loss into our fund balance. But overall, it was a good impact.
I do want to add, I think it's important to know, as you said, it's unaudited, and when we get the audited numbers, they may be off, but I have faith in Mr. Owens' numbers. So I will say, but when we think about the budget, you know, when we did, we always talk about our budget deficit, and we had a, really anticipated a pretty significant budget deficit last year, about four million. Always we say, you know, that's a projection, they do a great job watching that. So for us to only show that eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, with the fact that we purchased an entire building on our own out of our account, we're really excited about that.
That's great.
Correct. So last year, we did budget roughly four point seven million to go into fund balance, but like I said, if it wasn't for Ridgely Road, we would have added two point three. But of course, that discussion we had in earlier during budget cycle, five point nine that we budgeted this year is the most extreme that we have, but that's usually due to projecting low revenues and high expenditures. So if you'll turn on the FY twenty-five and look through the revenue here with me, as you see, our local sale option is projected to come in at one hundred and fourteen percent, so definitely two point three million more. That is thanks to our sales tax, and then, of course, our interest and tuition, one hundred and thirty percent. We had a really good year with our investments, thanks to our contract last year, so we can point to that. And on, if you turn over to the expenditure side, as you see, at the bottom, we ended up only using ninety-five percent of our total projected expenditure budget. So that is just hard work within each department, trying to save every dollar that we can. Of course, we have slack within our budgets for, you know, employees' needs, benefits, and so forth, but we were fortunate enough to raise our coverage and our insurance last year, still come in at this low cost, and mainly that's thankful to regular instruction, transportation, operation of plant. Transportation is savings in fuel and employees, and obviously, Mr. Barge had full staff last year and reduced our double route, so that was a lot of our savings last year.
I'd like to see that.
Yes, beautiful.
Good job.
Good job.
Group effort. So if that's FY twenty-five, I believe it needs to be approved before I move on.
Yes, I believe so. Do I have a motion to approve the FY twenty-five unaudited revenue and expenditure report?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Any comments or questions for Mr. Owens?
Thank you for working so hard.
Yeah.
All of you. Everyone. I know everybody works hard.
For sure. All right, all those in favor of approving this unaudited revenue and expenditure report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it is approved. All right, Mr. Owens, next up is approval of the fiscal year twenty-six revenue and expenditure report.
See if you can do as well this time.
So, as you can see, we don't have much to report, but I did want to show FY twenty-five first, to show all the hard work that, you know, MCS has done in all the departments. So far this year, we are coming in just shy of what we are projected on income. However, as you can see, I went ahead and added the chart again to show you our roadmap for where we're projected at the end of the year. Now, that will fluctuate as we bring more income amendments and expenditure amendments to, to the board for approval, but we will try to keep that in line, that way we will hit our goal. Over here in our revenue and expenditures, nothing's out of line right now on our percentage points. That's where we're currently monitoring, so to speak, on every month. Once we get, you know, past our first full quarter, then we will probably have some more data where I can project out and sort of see where we land come into the year. Any questions?
Let's do our motion. Do we have a motion to approve the FY twenty-six revenue and expenditure report?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Settles, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Now, any comments or questions for Mr. Owens?
No, he just looks so sharp tonight.
That's a comment?
He always looks sharp. Does he not?
Yeah.
Wife dressing him.
Have admitted to that, Sarah Thompson.
Hey, one night you can come in a t-shirt and jeans. I give you permission.
I will say, I do like how you changed on the comparison chart, like it makes it a lot easier to understand now, this, with the different colors on the graph, and allowing us to be able to see what's budgeted. I like the new change, thank you.
All right, all those in favor of approving the expenditure report, please, and revenue report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it's approved. Thank you, Mr. Owens. Next, we have reports and information, and our first one is notification of board committee assignments as appointed by the board chair. I think this is my item. You've been appointed to some assignments. I will note, these really haven't changed much since last year, we had a couple of changes, along with swapping this role, Mr. Campbell and I have swapped a place on the sick leave bank as a trustee, Mr. Campbell will take my place, and Mr. Settles has taken Mr. Richardson's place on the community.
Yes. Community advisory.
Community advisory board. Next, the enrollment and PTR report. Ms. Rocha.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board.
Thank you.
If you won't mind giving me just one moment, I'm going to change the slides here. Hope you're all doing well tonight.
Doing well, thank you.
So tonight is period one enrollment.
Well, I can imagine.
As we take a look, I'd like to take a pause and look, ooh, that kind of moves there, I didn't realize that, from twenty-four, twenty-five. So you've heard me give unofficial chronic absentee rates. Chronic absentee rates is ten percent of the school year, looking at eighteen absences a day or more, so it's excused and not excused together. And as we take a look at AMO, I want to point a couple of things out. That's annual, the annual measure, annual, oh my gosh, I can't talk, annual measurable objectives. It's a state standard. As we look at, think of it as we look at the year, and the states puts a formula in place, and if you were to look at, driving on the interstate, looking at a mile marker, or go to a, your house, maybe look at the door frame and look at where those marks are, is where we expect our children to grow, and if they're on progress, and as you look at single AMO, that's based on the steady rate, and the double is just a little bit faster. So based on that formula, these are where our schools have measured up. And the federal student groups are based on the federal guidelines, so we look at all students together, and then we look at our students by ethnicity and race as well. So just really wanted to point, point that out, district-wide, we did improve, we decreased, we had eleven point one percent, and then we had a decrease of point seven from last year. So just really wanted to shout out our attendance secretaries, our principals, staff, and families as well, for showing up every day.
So just to make sure I understand, so.
Yes, ma'am.
The single AMO, that means they hit their target.
That is correct.
And then the double AMO means they did double better?
They grew just a little bit more. And so in that sense, they decreased.
An improvement. Yeah, so a decrease in chronic absenteeism, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So when we look at AMO, we typically look at it for academics, but we also have the measure in our strategic plan for discipline and for attendance.
Got it.
As we look at our total enrollment for pre-K through sixth, we see a slight decrease. We're comparing this to period nine of last school year to period one, so that's the first twenty days, we have three hundred and sixty less students. As we look at our rounded average daily attendance, we're at ninety-six point two percent, slightly above where we were last year, we're at ninety-six percent last year. As we take, take a look at our truancy rate, this number's always going to look different, because it always starts with a higher number in period nine, and then we have fifteen students at this point this year, and we have been in contact and working with those families as well. As we take a look at our chronically absent rate, that is the, this, for this period, it's two days, which is ten percent of the school year, and as we take a look, we have seventeen-hundred-and-fifty-four student, students, that number drastically drops during the school year, it's kind of like the golf score. So as you look at it, it just steadily drops, because we have the ten percent of the school year spread over the one hundred and eighty days. As we look at our PTR, we see slight decreases. We've talked about some of this at our board workshop in August. As we take a look at that approximate average, average daily attendance, this is a snapshot, we do a snapshot around one o'clock every day, we do not go back and adjust it, so if students turn notes in, absences and so forth, this is just a quick snapshot to see where we are relative, and we are, at the very beginning, that first week, we're a little bit higher, but we've decreased since that time. Be happy to answer any questions.
Now, that's based on percentage, right?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have an insurance update. Dr. Duke.
Yes, I just wanted to update the board on our insurance rates for this year. Open enrollment starts through our HR department October first, the third, October third, thank you. So we will be rolling out our new insurance plans. Of course, we are on the state insurance plan, I think it's always important to remind our employees, and this year, this, well, and the state sets those insurance rates. This year, there was a five percent increase to those rates across, kind of an aggregate. There are so many different plans, and if you can look, you see the coverage plans in your packet, and, but that, it averages out, or aggregates, to a five percent increase. The way we approached it this year was to apply that five percent proportionally across our plans, meaning that just as the employees' portion of that increased, we also raised our, our employer portion the same percentage. Probably the best way to say it is if, you know, we were paying last year ninety-two percent of the employees' coverage, we are still paying ninety-two percent of that employees' coverage this year. So it was just a proportional increase. We know anytime insurance rate goes up, it's money out of our employees' pocket, so we wanted to make sure that we increased our contribution just as much. We've made some really good progress the last few years out of our insurance rates, and so always want to point that out. We are paying at least eighty percent on all of our plans for our employees. Some of our plans, we're paying up to ninety-five percent, and then, of course, we actually have two options that are completely free to our employees, so we pay a hundred percent of those plans. So really pleased with that, but that will open up in the next few, well, October third for our employees to go on and start selecting their insurance for next year, but those rates are provided. Our HR department has gone around to all the schools and done this for our schools, so they have these rates as well. We talked at our last meeting, I believe, when y'all approved the contract for Delta Dental, we do have a new dental insurance carrier. Monthly premiums for all the plans under the new dental will actually decrease for our employees, so we're excited about that. There's actually now a larger network for dentists and richer coverage for those, and one of the things we're really excited about the new dental plan is the elimination of the waiting period for major periodontist or orthodontic work, and that was something that we had heard from our employees quite a bit about that waiting period, so we're excited to have that be going away. So again, you have the rates in there, our rates are incredibly competitive with surrounding districts, so we're very excited about that. We know that's part of the total compensation package that we offer our employees, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We are projecting with that increase that our medical increase will be about a six-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-dollar increase for the district.[1736.46] increase for the district. The total projection for FY26 is about $12.7 million for insurance that the board will cover on the employees' behalf.
All right, next up is the director's update.
Yes, just a few more updates tonight. Not a whole lot on the agenda, but do want to remind and just kind of emphasize what Ms. Trell said earlier, we have the state of the schools, which will be next Tuesday at 8:00 at Redstone. We invite a lot of our community leaders and our partners to that. Would love the board to come. It's a fun, fun morning. You get some breakfast, get some coffee, and take about 45 minutes to hear about all the great things that we provide to our community about the school, so we hope to see you there. The only other update I have is, believe it or not, we're about a week and a half from fall break, so I know Ms. Dodd's very aware of that. We are coming up on fall break, as Kid, and Mr. Rocha, we've ended period one. We're about to end our second reporting period, so the year is going by very quickly. That'll happen, I think, October 3rd is also the second reporting period day. So we're moving quickly through the year, but we're off to a great start, and that's all my updates tonight.
All right, thank you. Under other business, I do want to remind everyone, our next board meeting will be